Going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, August 9. And I would like to note for the record that we have most council members present here in the Nat U Hill Room. Do we have Marty on? Oh, okay.
I don't see her.
If Kim Shell could be added as a panelist, that would be great. Um, okay, so let's, just in case she's there, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. And and then we'll, we'll go from there. So, um, Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
And Counselor McKim.
Here.
And Counselor Hawke. Okay, so we have six of the seven here, two, three, four, six, yeah, in person, great. So, um, time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I put my hands to the black of the highest state of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and with liberty and shall to the fore.
At this time, I would like to turn the floor over to our legal counsel, Molly Turner King, regarding the passing of Judge Kellums.
So on July 29, 2022, the Honorable Judge Mark R. Kellums was involved in a car accident that ended his life. Judge Kellums served as a Monroe County Circuit Judge for 38 years, and even after his retirement in 2018, he continued to serve as a senior judge on a regular basis. Beyond the bench, Judge Kellums was active in our community as a deacon at St. Charles, an adjunct professor at the IU Maurer School of Law, and he helped coordinate the prison ministries program. I am fortunate enough to have had the opportunity to have Judge Kellums both as a professor and to have practiced in front of him as a prosecutor and a public defender. His wealth of knowledge and compassion will be greatly missed and irreplaceable. At this time, I would like to ask him to take a moment of silence in his memory and to honor all the contributions he's made to our community.
Okay, thank you. He will be definitely missed in our community. Thank you for those words, Molly. Next on our agenda is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So tonight, we'll have a time limit of three minutes. Does anyone have a comment to make? Hi, welcome.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in pulling people together around economic development strategy and growing quality jobs. I wanted to come this evening with an invitation to everyone on council, everyone in the room, and anyone who's listening to an initiative that we're working on called the Economic Vitality Project. This is a project that was created because we started to hear from partners across the community that many of our shared challenges are being addressed in silos across different governments, different organizations, et cetera. Those include things like workforce, housing, quality of life issues, et cetera. So we launched the Economic Vitality Project with Fourth Economy, which is a consulting firm, to do three things: to convene people across the community to say, what are the challenges that we want to address together? Number two, how do we support existing initiatives to address those issues? So we're not duplicating anything but rowing in the same direction. And then number three, where do we need to fill in the gaps as a community? To be clear, this is not a study. This is actually building on prior studies and plans and other efforts in the community. But it's really trying to cast a broader net to bring people together towards a common vision and action that will happen after we get through this process in 2023 to implement solutions. So tonight, and I encourage folks to take out your phones, I guess this is the one time that people say, take out your phones. If you go to economicvitalityproject.com or if you go to bloomingtonedc.com/evp. So again, that's economicvitalityproject.com or bloomingtonedc.com/evp. There's an engagement survey on the website, and we encourage anyone from across the community to fill that out. There's opportunities to participate in focus groups, in interviews, in working groups, et cetera. And if anybody would like to share that with a friend, as long as you live and work in Monroe County, we really want everyone's voices at the table. So we hope everyone will get involved. I'll be back with updates on the initiative as we move forward. And also, thank you, because I know we've had a number of members of council that have been a part of this so far, as well as other parts of Monroe County government. So we're looking forward to working with you moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comments? Anyone online? It looks like we do have one person online. Can we enable speaking?
Good evening, council. This is Jim Shelton. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of CASA's Accord Point of Special Advocates again to update you and the community about two upcoming CASA trainings. As you know, CASA's are volunteers who work with children and advocate for children whose parents are in the justice system for abusing or neglecting their children. And we will have a training, excuse me, coming up September 19 through October 10, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 5:30 to 8:30. Excuse me. You would learn all the things that you would need to learn to work a case. You would have then be sworn in by Judge Galvin and Harvey and be assigned a case that you would work with one of the CASA staff. They will be in person in the CASA conference room, which is now in the showers complex on the west side in the commercial area on the second floor. We do have over three dozen children who, right now, we have no volunteer to assign to be the CASA. For that reason, we moved the training from October to September. And we're also going to have a second training, and this is what we call child visit monitors. These are volunteers whose only duties are to, once a month, go to the placement location for the child and see how they're doing. And then you fill out a report, and the CASA staff will use the data they get from these reports to decide the prioritization for assignment of CASAs if they do become available. This training is a total of nine hours on three days. That'll be September 12, 14, and 15. Again, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 5:30 to 8:30. They will be in person. And we invite people to consider this. This is a really good opportunity for somebody who just doesn't have the time or think they don't have the time to fulfill all the responsibilities of a CASA. Again, the visit monitor only writes and fills out a form after visiting. So no court hearings, no monitoring how the parents are doing, no looking into services and all that. You just report how the kids are doing. So invite people to think about that. For more details, you can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, you'll find a frequently asked question page, you'll also find the application. And you should use the same application for either type of volunteer. So we invite people to please consider that. Again, we've got over three dozen children that we need to get a responsible adult to help serve. Thank you for the opportunity to spread the word.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will go to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda?
I would like to make a motion to change the agenda from item 15 with our boards and commission appointment. If we can move that up since we have a hurty agenda here to after the council liaison updates.
Second.
Hey. And I would, before we vote, like to just note for the record that Counselor Hawke is in attendance. And now that we have all members in person, I believe we can just do a voice vote. So all in favor of moving Agenda Item 15 to place spot number seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Any, any other changes, additions to the agenda? Okay. And now we have department updates. Do we have any departments that would like to make an update at this time? I am not seeing anyone in person or online.
Yes.
There is one.
Yes, we have one.
Great. Oh, Mr. Malone, great.
Thank you so much. We just wanted to thank you again for the funding that was provided for the expansion of services at YSB. We have hired all of our positions, that is, two new counselors, a youth prevention specialist, data specialist as well, and another case manager. So all those are in, we're getting started. We will be starting the truancy program, a pilot project, I should state, a pilot project of the truancy program. So it will not be as big as it will be long term. But it is, we will be beginning that this month. So we are really excited to be moving forward with all of those things. And we wanted to come back and mention that we are hard at work. All the offices are filled, and thank you so much for investing in the department so we can do more for the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the update. Any other department updates? Okay. Then we will move to council liaison updates. Are there any council members who would like to say a few words? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Munson.
I have two updates, neither of which are formerly liaison updates. First, the Solid Waste Management District Board of Directors is meeting Thursday to review and make decision about the 2023 budget. And that's always something of interest to the public. That's why I wanted to mention that. Secondly, the county council's Sophia Travis Grant's Review Committee will be presenting our recommendation to the council at our work session two weeks from tonight. And I know the public is very interested in that, and that's why I wanted to make the announcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Iverson.
Thank you. I wanted to bring some updates from our health department here at Monroe County. I wanted to remind the public that press conferences have resumed now that cases have been decreasing. I also want to remind the public that there are hospital beds now in our hospitals that have been taken by individuals whose primary diagnosis is COVID-19. And I want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that vaccines are free, they are available. Please go get your vaccine. We're not vaccinated. Vaccines are widely available. The second update I want to bring from our health department is that the health department now has a page dedicated to monkeypox. I am very happy to share that vaccines are being shipped throughout the state of Indiana, and vaccines have arrived here in Monroe County. I want to just spend a little bit of time, if I may, that monkeypox is spread not through someone's sexual orientation, but it is spread through direct contact with an infectious branch scab or bodily fluid. It can be passed through the placenta with a pregnant person and their fetus. And it is also possible to get monkeypox from infected animals. Let me be very clear. Monkeypox is not a gay disease. There are testing available here in Monroe County. There are vaccines available in Monroe County. So if you think you have a rash that could be monkeypox, please go to your primary care physician or other resources detailed on the Monroe County Health Department.
Thank you. Any other council liaison updates? No? Okay. Then we will move to what was item 15, Boards and Commissions' Appointment.
Counsel. Sorry. Commissioner Thomas wants to give a department update.
Okay.
So if you want to go back or...
Yeah, we can go back and do that. Is she online?
TSD, can you please promote Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, while they're trying to do that, why don't we go ahead with our, with number 15, and then we'll, we'll circle back after that, if that's okay.
Counsel, I move to approve the recommendation to appoint Tianna Urge to the Women's Commission, completing a two-year term that expires on January 1, 2024.
Second.
Uh, hey, that's you, Jennifer?
Yes, so the Women's Commission hasn't been able to have a chance to meet because we haven't had forum. And I know I personally have made it a new council member goal for myself. Ambitious I am. Trying to make sure our county council appointments are filled. And with this new appointment here, I believe we have one more vacancy, which also seems like we have another person. But I'm really glad for Ms. Rohe to come in. I know that I also, there was a little bit of confusion of another person, and I see her on Zoom. So I wanted to make mention of her as well. I know Councilmember Hawke and I also talked to this individual, Ms. Molly Otto, who is on as well. And so the commissioner's appointed her last week, and we are just really excited to have both of these women. And we still have some vacancies on our Women's Commission. So if anybody is paying attention and watching, definitely, please make sure to fill out an application. But with these appointments, we are going to be able to meet in another week. And they are very excited to meet. So very qualified people that we have here and very much excited to have these women be a part of it, but also to vote on, Mr. Rohe, today.
Fantastic. Thank you, Counselor Crossley, for working so hard to fill that docket. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Right, is there any public comment on this appointment?
We have a raised hand with Molly Otto.
Oh, great.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to be a part of the Women's Commission, and I'm very glad to be here tonight.
Thank you, Molly. That's, we're excited to have you. Any other public comments on the appointment? Then and since we are all in person, we can do a voice vote. So all in favor of those approving the appointment of Ms. Eroke to the Women's Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And then motion passes unanimously. Are we able to get Commissioner Thomas on yet? Okay, great. We'll go ahead and hear an update from her.
Thank you all. I think TSD had some computer problems. So I am here waiting in the wings, and thank you so much for this opportunity. This is just a note from the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. You will be receiving this, I believe, tomorrow morning in paper electronic form. This is our response to the 144s. The Otter's Office presented the Form 144, a budget estimate of proposed salaries and wages at the June 30 of 2022 meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Our role in this process is to provide a recommendation to the Monroe County Council for consideration prior to setting the salaries and budget for 2023. We appreciate the council's commitment to ensure that all Monroe County employees are paid equitably and adequately, reflecting the current local employment market and the local cost of living. As you are all aware, there has been a significant increase in the cost of living nationally, regionally, and locally. The Department of Labor provides a calculation of the increase in the Consumer Price Index each month. The most recent data indicates that from June 2021 through June 2022, the CPI increased 9.5% in the Midwest. So we have two recommendations. First, we recommend that the council continue to work toward pay equity and ensure all full-time county employees earn a living wage. Second, we recommend that the council provide an increase for all employees, those who are not otherwise statutorily set by the state, an increase of at least 9.5%, which reflects the current increase in the CPI. We are proud every day of our Monroe County employees and the work they do for our community. As counselors know, ensuring adequate pay and keeping up with the cost of living will have an impact on our ability to retain our excellent workforce. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We are now ready to move on to item, the original number seven on our agenda, which is the fiscal body's annual review of the estimated property tax levy limits and property tax caps for non-binding entities. Every year, the county fiscal body must review these estimated property tax levy limits and circuit breakers, as they're sometimes called, and the impact for Monroe County non-binding entities. I believe Counselor McKim has been gracious enough to look things over for us and interpret them for all of us. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but this is something that we go through every year. Basically, the Department of Local Government Finance provides us with several documents. They provide us with documents that estimate the property tax cap circuit breaker impacts, the maximum civil levies, the maximum rates for rate-controlled funds, and estimated debt service levies. And so what I just do is I take that data and I put it in a spreadsheet where we can then compare it to previous years. And so all the source data that I have is from those DLGF documents that they provided. So first, we'll do the estimated tax cap impacts. So what I have here is the estimated tax cap impacts that are divided out into, or circuit breakers, that are divided out into five categories. Civil max levy, which is basically our frozen, we call the frozen levy in the county. It's basically our operating levies. Debt funds, rate-driven funds, which is generally cumulative capital development, cumulative bridge funds, township fire, and school operations levies. And so the DLGF provided estimates on all the, on all these, for all these different units in these different categories. And I've just laid them out here on a grid and then compared them against the 2022 numbers. And I don't think we really see anything terribly interesting overall. The DLGF is projecting a $312,000 increase in circuit breaker impact for all of the county put together for 2023 versus 2022. For Monroe County government alone, they're estimating we'll see about a 10% increase in the property tax and circuit breakers, which is about $46,000 extra. So that's essentially $46,000 that will have to come out of our estimated revenue, property tax revenue for the year. Now, I did find, in just reviewing all these numbers, there are four, well, there are really five anomalies, I think. Four of them, as far as I can tell, are a mistake unless, in fact, all five of them are probably mistakes unless something has changed with the statute. But four of the townships, Benton, Bloomington, Van Buren, and Washington Township, all of which are now part of the Monroe Fire Protection District, now show in these DLGF documents a substantial impact in the township fire levy, which no longer even exists. In fact, for several of these, it hasn't even existed for more than a year. So I'm just going to guess something got improperly coded there, but I've marked it that way. Steinsville's estimated property tax levy, or circuit breaker impact, essentially went down to nearly zero, what, a 98.6% decrease? And I'm not aware of any special condition that would have led to that. So I mean, it's, my guess is that's an error, but I I have no way of knowing. So I don't think there's anything else of particular interest here. You know, a couple of the very small townships, like Polk Township, showed a relatively high percentage increase in their circuit breaker impact, but it's still ultimately a very low number. So I think that's all we have for circuit breaker impacts, unless anybody has any questions.
I do.
Okay.
So I had noticed the township fire pages in there for the, those townships. And when we review this, we then make a recommendation that we've reviewed it and we have no changes. So we, what is our recommendation to DLGF?
Check the numbers and make sure that all these townships are coded correctly.
Okay. Okay. All right.
And remember that our minutes can serve as our recommendations. We don't actually have to have a motion.
Oh, okay. Are there any other questions for Jeff while he's on this?
Okay, so that's one of four. The second is the maximum levies. And those are divided out into three categories: the civil max levies, the fire levy, and then the school operating levy. And obviously, they apply to different units. What we see is exactly what we would expect to see. The change in the civil max levies for almost all of the units are 5%, which is the maximum levy growth quotient. And so that's exactly what we expected. The only difference is that we're, that we're going to see, we see that the Benton Township and Washington Township, their fire levy or maximum levy has gone down to zero. And that's because those are now part of the Monroe Fire Protection District. We see that Richland Township has a bit of an excess levy that they appealed for and received. And so their fire levy has gone up more than the 5%. And then finally, in the schools, Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation, their school operating levy is going up 5.9% rather than the 5.0%. And I looked at the statute, and it looks like there is an option for appeals for either transportation or school bus replacement. And I don't know, maybe Counselor Hawke may have watched one of their board meetings and may be familiar with what they applied for. But that's, that appears to be the only exception for the operating levy that's specific to schools. So that's really, and then on that, of course, Monroe Fire Protection District, their their max levy increase is their max levy increase has gone up twenty to twenty point seven percent. And that's simply because of additional territory that they're now covering. So any comments or questions on that?
Right. Just wanted to make sure that people understand that doesn't mean everybody's paying into that fire district. Their taxes are going to go up that much. It's just there's more people paying into it. So the total levy will be more. That doesn't mean each individual person will be paying more.
Yeah, that's important to note. Any other, any questions on this? Thank you.
We'll now move to item number three. And this is just the rate-controlled funds, which are generally cumulative capital development, cumulative bridge, major bridge, or cumulative fire for the different units. And what we see here is really nothing very much. Benton Township's cumulative rate has gone down to zero because their fire protection is now provided by the Monroe Fire Protection District. And the maximum rate for cumulative capital development for the town of Ellisville has gone up. But that's only because it appears that they haven't actually used their maximum rate in the past. So their maximum rate this year has gone up from what they've actually adopted by point zero zero six one. But that is, like I said, because they have adopted less than the maximum that they could have. They still could, they may still adopt the same amount as they did, same rate as they did last year. So there may be no increase at all. Otherwise, all the other, all the other changes are zero.
Great. Any questions on that?
Okay. And then finally, we have the debt, the estimated debt service. And so what I did is I took what was in the in the DLGF documentation and then compared it against the actual debt levies for twenty twenty two. So it's not compared against what we reviewed last year. It's compared against the actual debt levies. And so, you know, I I don't know that there's any grand interpretation here. Monroe County's estimated debt levy with what we know now is, has gone down from two point eight million dollars to one point five million dollars. But that's with an existing general obligation bond. That assumes no other new bonds. Let's see, Perry Township paid off their debt, which we knew they would. So they're going from a debt levy of twenty eight thousand down to zero. Richland Township's essentially the same. Bloomington Civil City went up slightly from about one point nine million to two million. Ellisville's went up slightly. The Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation went down. The school levies, I'm not even going to go into the school debt. They're pretty complicated. But the Richland Bean Blossom went down and Monroe County debt levy went up by about two million dollars. The Monroe County Public Library, we now have two bond series. So that went up from about seven hundred and ten thousand to nine hundred and two thousand. And then the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District just went up a nominal amount from two hundred eighty four thousand to three hundred five thousand. So I'm not sure that there's anything particularly surprising or interesting here, but let's see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
All right. And all that is, and those numbers are in the drop box if you want to continue to review them.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. So we do not have to make any specific motion, approve or not approve, is what I'm hearing. But typically, we do direct the auditor to let the the non-binding taxing units know that we've reviewed this. Is that correct?
I think also, we also invite any representatives of any units to make public comment if they want.
Okay. Well, yeah, as always. Yeah, for sure. Okay, so we've reviewed it. We've noted some anomalies, some points that maybe need to be reviewed again. Yes, Counselor Hock?
Yes, I'd just like to make it very clear to folks who might be listening at home. This doesn't mean to say that this is how we would support each of those budgets because they each have their own people that vote on those budgets. This just means we've looked at them.
Right.
Well, and we haven't even looked at their budgets. These are
We've looked at their tax rates, their levies, and the information that the state sends us. I have looked at their budgets that they're reviewing right now. We haven't all approved them as yet.
Okay, so if there are no object, oh, go ahead.
I just want to make one more clarification just for
It's on.
So, okay, that works.
Yeah.
So my understanding is that in addition to the maximum levy numbers that were shared today, the mental health adjustment and the developmental disabilities adjustment also were increased by the maximum, max levy growth quotient of five percent. That's correct?
Yes.
All right. And the only reason I raise that today is because it has impact on what we're talking about with the Criminal Justice Reform Committee and the ways that we're funding mental health and individuals who have been diagnosed with a developmental disability.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? So what I'd like to do then at this time is just ask council staff to work with the auditor to fulfill the statute requirements regarding the non-binding taxing units. And with that, then we will move to item number eight, which is the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And we'll hear a brief presentation from Eric Spoonmore, who's the president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce regarding the city's convention center proposal.
We've also got Deputy Mayor Don Griffin that will have some remarks as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, we welcome you both.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. All right. Well, good evening, counsel. I'm Eric Spoonmore with the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Deeply appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight for a discussion on a very important priority here in the community, and that, of course, is the Convention Center Expansion Project. The chamber has been a strong proponent of the expanded Convention Center project, which is supposed to be funded by the Monroe County Food and Beverage Tax, which was passed five years ago. Since two thousand eighteen, the food and beverage tax has collected over fourteen million dollars. But sadly, there's been no progress on the expansion. Understandably, the COVID pandemic disrupted the planning and construction process. And I'm very confident that the community is now ready to focus on our future and identify a path forward for meaningful progress on the expansion plans. As you know, the county commissioners and the county council play critical roles in the Convention Center expansion process. The commissioners, for all intents and purposes, own the land and the Convention Center assets. And the county council has authority over the food and beverage tax funding mechanism. In addition, the city of Bloomington has an equally important role to play because it holds the food and beverage tax revenue that's been earmarked for the expansion of the Convention Center. And over the past several months, I've been having a lot of conversations about Convention Center expansion with our businesses and city and county officials, including you all. I can say undeniably that there's strong enthusiasm for jump-starting this project as soon as possible. And this would include the overwhelming majority of elected officials that I've spoken with, many of which have made public statements to that effect. So just to reiterate, the chamber, our membership, and particularly a significant number of our small downtown locally-owned businesses are in strong support of the expansion, and we'd like to see meaningful progress made as soon as possible. And to that end, we seek the county council's continued partnership in making this happen. And so I'm excited to share here publicly that the chamber, through our many conversations with key stakeholders, including our partners and city government, has identified a real and viable path forward for Convention Center expansion in a way that would be a win-win for all parties involved. It would involve a transfer of assets from the county to the city. And I'm pleased to say that the city is willing to reasonably compromise the county to do this. Deputy Mayor Don Griffin will share those details with you here in a few moments. But before Mr. Griffin takes the mic, I just wanted to mention one more thing here that I think will resonate really well with a large segment of our community. And I hope our elected leaders will also appreciate this. And look, I know this project has been extraordinarily challenging. And it's hard to exactly pinpoint the underlying cause of those difficulties. But in my view, this is kind of a watershed moment here for our community. And at a time when divisions are conspicuously high, our elected leaders have a terrific opportunity to demonstrate leadership to the community and positively prove that teamwork and collaboration and partnership across city and county lines is possible and that we can all work together as a team to achieve important shared community goals. And I know you all know that, and you all do an excellent job serving our community and often in very thankless ways. But as I mentioned earlier, this can be a win for everyone. And I want us to take advantage of this opportunity that we know will deliver benefits to our local economy and quality of life for decades to come. The chamber is willing to partner in any way that you need. Just let me know how I can help, and we'll be there every step of the way to facilitate discussions and progress on this very important initiative. And finally, I just wanted to say that we're not asking you to make any decisions tonight on this proposal. What we would ask is that you give it your thoughtful consideration and engage with your colleagues on the Board of Commissioners to discuss their level of interest and teaming up together on this plan. I look forward to continuing this conversation and answering any questions that you have. Thanks again for making time available for us tonight. Really, really appreciate that. It's always a pleasure to collaborate with my friends on the county council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. And now we'll hear from Don Griffin, our deputy mayor. Welcome.
How are you folks doing?
Great.
Friends and neighbors. Thanks again for the Chamber of Commerce, Visit Bloomington, Downtown Bloomington, and Convention and Visitor Commission for their leadership. So we as a city are just basically following their lead for a common cause. And let me give you a little bit about the presentation to let you know what we're thinking. As part of the proposal, the city would take full responsibility for the expansion in exchange for the county transferring ownership and management of the Convention Center and supporting properties. Under this proposal, the city of Bloomington would pay off the county's existing debt on the Convention Center, estimated at around two million dollars. Number two, contribute to the Monroe County Health Department, the opioid settlement funds received by the city, estimated to be one point nine million dollars over the next eighteen years to support them in a more consolidated effort to address opioid addiction and recovery in Monroe County. Number three, initiate a multi-year pilot program to expand Bloomington transit beyond city limits along the east-west corridor to provide improved access to Ivy Tech and nearby employers. The city would charge only the incremental cost of the additional services. Number four, we would assume responsibility for all operations and management of the existing and new expanded Convention Center. Now, for its part, the county would do the following, or we're asking the county to please do the following. Transfer to the city all real and personal property owned by the county or building corporation comprising the current Convention Center and property designated for potential future Convention Center use. Next, support the annual transfer to the city or its designated property management entity, the share of the annual innkeeper's tax received by the county currently used in maintaining and operating the Convention Center. Number three, retain its share of food and beverage tax generated outside city limits for the county's own appropriate purposes. Now, the important things that we need to note is that the Convention Center is an important asset to the community, and I know you all know that. It's vital to the downtown and to our local and regional economy. The food and beverage tax dollars generated for the project are public funds. This is not a real estate sale, but a transfer in trade of assets. We also recognize the devastating effect of the recently passed S B one by the General Assembly on Hoosier Women. Rather than encouraging divestment from Indiana, we should encourage investment in Bloomington, a community with forward-thinking values, creating more space to meet, utilizing our opportunity to be a beacon to other communities. D B I Visit Bloomington also estimates that during twenty twenty two, they've had a loss of economic impact of two point three million dollars. They would have generated, the city would have generated two point three million more dollars if we had have had a larger Convention Center. And I want to reiterate that this is, these are the first steps. And this is the beginning of a conversation, a discussion, and details will follow in the days and weeks ahead. And one thing that we like is we urge the county to designate a small group that can negotiate on behalf of the county. Maybe one council member, one commissioner, so we can come to an agreement and transfer property by the end of September. Now, I can, we can either, you can ask me questions, but I also have some other folks that I'd love to come up and speak. Maybe they'll answer some of your questions. So first, we'll have Mike Campbell, and he's going to talk about the C V C and innkeeper tax. And next, Talisha, she's going to talk about D B I and marketing of the Convention Center. And then we'll follow that with Mike McAfee of Visit Bloomington and the marketing of Convention Center and lost business due to not having the expanded Convention Center. Is that okay?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Campbell.
Mike Campbell with the Convention and Visitors Commission. And first of all, thank you for taking the time to consider this proposal. This is something that the hospitality and restaurant industry has been looking forward to for quite some time. I remember talking about Convention Center expansion many, many moons ago. And so it's good to see that we're at a point where we're talking about this and coming to an agreement. The C V C is and believes that the expansion of the Convention Center is probably the one largest single impact that we could have for the fiscal viability of the hospitality industry. And so it is the one vehicle that falls in the window where the hospitality business, both restaurants and hotels are at its lowest, which is through the week, and fall in line with the Convention Center business. So we're supportive of that. And Deputy Mayor Griffin indicated some numbers, and he was pretty close in his estimation on that. The current debt that's outstanding is around two point two million dollars. So and that goes down the more payments we make. So September will be a payment and December. So you would come to that number correctly eventually if we don't get there quickly. So and the other part of this is that there's still some details to work out. And certainly. And some important details. I think the Convention and Visitors Commission has always I think the Convention and Visitors Commission has always taken the approach that we will continue to be a partner, regardless of if the city owns the convention center or not. And the reason is that falls within the purview of our mission. Uh, we're, um, tasked with promoting, uh, Monroe County, uh, and tourism and the economic benefits, um, that, uh, that that brings to all of its members, uh, regardless of who owns this building or that building. Uh, and so we'll continue to be a partner. Uh, obviously, there's some details to work out. And we'll continue to market, uh, this community, um, with the funds collected from the innkeeper's tax. So, thank you.
Hi, thanks. Talisha Kopick with Downtown Bloomington, Inc., and we're the management company for the convention center and, um, have been for 31 years. And just want to say we've loved working with Monroe County. You've always been very supportive, uh, through the council and the county commissioners. Um, it's been a great partnership with the, uh, Convention and Visitors Commission, Visit Bloomington, and the city of Bloomington. They've always owned that parch- are part of the, uh, the property south of the convention center. And, you know, we've worked with them on, you know, implementing events. And, uh, so see this as a big partnership going forward as well. Um, you know, today I'm sharing that our local business and conference business is back. I know there's been some question of that. Are people going to come back and meet in person again? And, um, the answer is yes. We've seen, uh, the group's attendance steadily grow, uh, over the year. And, um, you know, there are local groups need their fundraisers, they need their social events such as weddings. We just hosted an Indian wedding Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was a big production and beautiful. Um, local corporations need their meetings and associations, need their educational and networking components, and they need to do business and they're growing and they're ready to take the next step. Um, you know, interesting examples of groups that have been in the building in the last couple of weeks, the, uh, Indiana Rural Water Alliance, also secretly distribution with record labels, people from Spotify and all over the country, techies. And, um, then also the Bloomington Quilters Guild. So it's a real variety of people that come to the convention center for different needs. And, um, and on topics, um, just as through the pandemic, we were a vaccination clinic and a Bud Drive clinic. You know, now we're talking mental health issues. Tomorrow, a group, uh, called the Hostage Negotiators are coming in for three days. And so these are important events because they're that Sunday through Thursday business that, um, there aren't a lot of, um, uh, economic development tools that can bring that to the community. Um, so, I mean, we really are ready for that next step, uh, with the convention center expansion. Our groups are ready. Bloomington and Monroe County is a hub of education and learning, and people look to us for those topics. You know, when recycling was a big topic, people came here to learn about recycling. I mean, it's just Bloomington is a natural draw because of the university that's here and the things that we get into. And, um, it's a collaboration between the university of, um, whether there are professors that come, the geo, um, geographic, uh, council comes and, uh, professors come over and they, uh, teach their topics. But we, um, you know, we do have the ionization that was put into the convention center by the county commissioners and the COVID cares program, which has been really helpful. We're light and airy and we can have space to to move people around. But, um, you know, the building is getting a little worn out and it's been since 2010, uh, that we've been waiting on an expansion, uh, to do improvements to that building. And so, um, you know, kind of the longer time that we wait, the more that's going to have to be done. And you don't want to invest in it if we're going to do something different. So that's starting to be very awkward. And, you know, we want to have our best foot forward and we want to present a good quality product. And, um, just, there's a lot of good memories all the way around with this building and, uh, the people that have been part of it. And I think we're just ready to, um, to take that next step. And, um, you know, the tourism and hospitality industry is a natural fit for this community. It's good business that supports many of our businesses, our small businesses and local attractions are desperate to get the south side of downtown, um, developed into something that will help support and connect, uh, to strengthen our downtown. So with that, thank you, um, and look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike McAfee. I'm Executive Director at Visit Bloomington. I I've had the, really the honor of of working with Talisha for the last 15 years. Mike Campbell, for the last 15 years, I've known several of you for that time period. And you've probably heard me use the words responsible growth, um, in our efforts many, many times. That that's what this is. This is responsible growth. We're just meeting existing demand by doing this project. We we've, um, I I wanted to say something about Senate Bill One as well. Thanks to you and and the city and and everybody as well. We positioned ourselves to be the most open and welcoming community in this state by far, and we will continue to be that way. The groups that we are working with know that. It's one of the rea- it's one of the main reasons they want to come here is because, because of that attitude, because of that welcomeness and openness. So, so sure, um, you know, setting my personal feelings aside about that, I've got to do, I've got a job to do, and we will continue to do it, um, despite that legislation. So I just, uh, of course, it's, it's a big deal for the state and it's a big deal for us. But, um, I don't think that's going to be a big detriment to our group business, marketing and efforts down the line. Um, what will be is if we continue to have this very small building that we have that groups are growing out of, we we need to upgrade the technology. We need to make it easier for them to get around, for them to function through that, for they have to have all their spaces. I want to say this again. We're not trying to be in Indianapolis. We're not trying to beat Indianapolis. We're basically jumping up a tier. We're in the lowest tier possible. I mean, that's how small we are. We're trying to jump up a tier and be able to host groups of three or 400 comfortably versus 200. And it's the groups of three or 400 that want to come here, or maybe two of those groups at the same time. Or it's the group of 300 and the chamber luncheon in the building at the same time. And and being able to provide them the experience that they require, that, you know, it's, it's, it's very competitive out there. This isn't, uh, this isn't a situation where we build it and open the doors and everybody's coming. But we certainly do have a lot of groups very interested in wanting us to have this space, and we'll do our jobs and get them there. I've, uh, my, I've got two group sales reps right now, um, a sports person and a convention person. They're in Detroit at a Connect Conference. The, 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 the conference, the the convention sales manager, he has 47 appointments this week, meeting with event planners. These are people who've indicated they want to know more about the possibility of coming to Bloomington and Monroe County. Now, again, um, I think, uh, Don had mentioned lost business. Um, we we track that very closely, but, um, we're not calling on groups that are too big to come here. We do hear from some of them every once in a while, or by chance, we may meet with one that we didn't know was that big. So I've got 10 on a list this year that have shown interest in coming to Bloomington. About two, it would have been about $2 million in economic impact. That's what he's referring to. It's not like we, um, even turned that business down. We just didn't even talk to him any further because we knew we couldn't service them either with dates or obviously with the space that we have. We're we're up against that all the time. It's 10 to 20 of those a year, just, just organically, because, because again, we're, we're lean and mean. We don't spend our time recruiting groups that can't fit here. Um, we, we don't even go after groups that want to meet on weekends in the fall because of football. There's just no place for them to go. Wouldn't it be great if we could have a group of Indiana chiro practitioners here on a fall weekend and they could go to an IU football game? That's, that's really, we haven't even been able to sell that. That'd be great down the line. Um, just, just real quickly, um, again, thank you for your time. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Monroe County lodging revenue is up 58% this year over 2021. We're up 22% over 2019. I'm sure you probably saw Indianapolis talking about how much their, their tourism is up this year compared to last year. And and obviously, 2019 is the benchmark, um, but but we're, we're pacing 22% ahead of that. Um, one of Visit Bloomington's key performance indicators is our digital traffic. We're up 30 to 40%, depending on which category I'm looking at, over 21, 10 to 15% over 2019. We've got 28 co- convention and conference leads generated year-to-date. We normally do about 30 in a year. We've already done 28. And like I said, he's meeting with 47 people this week, so he'll bring a few home. We only count a lead as something that we could potentially host. He could, he could get 20 leads a week if he wanted to, but but these are real possibilities of things we can host. Um, and and I'm not going to shy away from this, uh, lack of labor force and continued rising costs of doing business are are a challenge we still face after, uh, coming out of pandemic. And a lot of work to do, um, but our industry is rebounding well and and things are going well. And we look forward to, uh, this opportunity. I I again, um, urge you to, and and I urge the county and the city to figure out a partnership and and work together to make this happen because it's really important for our future. Thank you.
All right. Well, hope you all found that information useful and helpful. Would be happy to answer any other questions that you have or, um, and, uh, go accordingly.
Sure. Um, thank you all for taking the time to present to us. We wanted to hear from you, um, so that we could start the discussion, and, um, I'm excited to do that. Um, I'll turn it over to counselors who might have questions and, um, hopefully anybody who can answer them, uh, will just step up. Are there any questions to my right? Yes.
I actually do not have questions, uh, specific questions that could be answered, but I have comments, uh, that I think are are important. First of all, I served having the privilege of working with many of you on convention center expansion, uh, efforts and, uh, served as the coun- council's representative on the convention center advisory committee and went through the process, as, uh, many of us did, of hearing about, uh, possibilities, alternatives, this and that, until we came to, uh, so we came to the pandemic and, uh, stalling any efforts to, uh, further collaborate between the, the county and the city. I recognize that I, as a council member, am not the decision maker for the county. Uh, we all know that. It is our county commissioners. And so we are limited in what we can decide upon, but we are not limited in what we can, uh, ask questions about and what we can be concerned about. And, uh, we, we all have constituents that we hear from. I hear from many who are very interested in expanding the convention center. I do hear from a few who, uh, still have no interest in this. But for the many that do, I want to, uh, share some comments. First, I serve, uh, as the council's representative on the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, along with, uh, uh, County Commissioner Thomas, uh, Count, Member of the City Council and Mayor, and, uh, three, uh, representatives of, uh, restaurants, and it can also be hotels, but, uh, tourism-related, uh, businesses. And I can report to you all that the food and beverage tax monthly returns are higher than they ever have been. This is, this is a substantial and dependable, uh, source of revenue for expanding the convention center, if that is the decision to be made. Second, I want to point out about this revenue, the, the city has its share, which they have committed to the convention center expansion. The county has its much smaller share, roughly 10%. That it can direct to its projects related to, uh, tourism. And I am concerned that we may lose the food and beverage tax by having it sunsetted by the General Assembly. I think we all ha- uh, might remember that this was an item of discussion, serious discussion in the last legislature. Uh, our representatives, uh, for Monroe, Monroe County, um, were able to, uh, to quash this, uh, at last year. I don't know what is going to happen last year, but I think we need to be able to show the state legislature that we have progress moving forward. I don't know if it's going to be September progress, but we, I think we have to be able to demonstrate progress in order to retain this. And for the ca- for county government, we have, uh, we have great interest in our trails and our parks, um, including, uh, putting expansion of, uh, facilities at Cars Farm Park that would enable, uh, us to have much better soccer fields, uh, trails that need maintenance as well as new trails that we dream about having, uh, connecting Monroe County to, to places, uh, both close and far away. I would hate to lose the, the source of revenue that we have available through the food and beverage tax. But I want the city to know that they should not offer to the county the, the opportunity of retaining the county's share of the food and beverage tax. That is not a decision of the city. That is something that is included in the ordinance that this body passed. And it is something that is not going to be changed by the city or by the county, um, but perhaps by the state legislature. Second, I have, uh, two concerns that I hope, uh, can be, uh, more information can be provided, uh, to the public and to the council as well as to the commissioners. First, what specific properties, uh, are under consideration that the county, uh, has acquired, uh, for convention-related, uh, business? And, uh, what sort of commitments were made, legal commitments were made when these were purchased? I think we have to know these specifics. Uh, second, um, I'm concerned about the, the offer of 1.9 million dollars over 18 years, uh, from the opio- city's share of the opioid settlement. And as something that would come to our health department, certainly we have funds that the county has received for opioid settlements, but we are just beginning to, uh, pull information together about what this means, what our obligations are, what possibilities, uh, this opens for us. And, um, I'm not sure that offer is, is really something that we would be prepared to take on. Uh, that is something that will take, uh, close coordination with the health department and the commissioners. And, uh, those are my, uh, initial concerns. I'll probably have more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilperson.
Does this work?
Try to put the microphone into the base of it, like push down the microphone.
Does that work? Oh, my gosh. Look at that. All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank both of you for coming here tonight. I know there's probably better things to do on a Tuesday night. So thank you. And I also want to recognize your leadership on this issue. Uh, as both of you stated, you've been working with us. You've been working to talk with us about this issue. And I really, uh, want to highlight that, that this community, when it comes to it, does work together. Uh, there's a lot out there about how we butt heads and, you know, don't talk and all this. And I think that's by and large a misnomer, and tonight really shows that when, you know, when we have leaders stepping up, that it can make a big difference. I want to thank you for being here and also want to thank our, uh, folks that we've been working with for so long, being here and sharing with the data. I know there's so much more data that you can share, and, uh, I'm sure that we'll have that available in future conversations. Uh, you know, at first blush, you know, when I read this, it, it just spoke to our shared values. And I think that's, that's really important. I, I think, you know, as you, as you read this, uh, we know that tourism is important to our community. We know that we have an opioid crisis going on that is not abating. We know that fentanyl is a reality in our community. We know that heroin is cheap. This is a problem. We need to address it. We also know that our buses don't go out to areas where they need to go out to, and it's not servicing people who need to use public transportation. You read this document, you see shared values. I think that's really important. Now, the devil's in the details, of course. So rather than read through, I have a lot of questions. And I think rather than reading through my lists of questions, I, I think I'll, I'll just categorize them. Uh, my, my first category of questions is about timing. When is a body going to be created? When is the, you know, when can we get this done? There are elections coming up that we need to be mindful of. There are all sorts of things that we need to be mindful of. The second category of questions is that of clarity. I think it's, it's a good faith effort that dollar amounts have been provided in here. Uh, I think that gives the public a lot of, uh, hope that this can be done. I, uh, I think it, you know, there's something can be done here. I'm, like I said before, I'm bullish on the, our ability to do this. Uh, and I, you know, I think we can come to some clarity on some of these items, um, coming forward. And then the third item is, is the cost. I think, um, Ms. Munson was talking a little bit about this and I, you know, want to make sure that we are, you know, my questions revolve around some of the costs that exist, some of the valuations on properties and things of that sort. That, uh, obviously, you know, maybe we don't have answers for today, but then we can suss out in the future. Let me conclude, uh, by saying, uh, I think as I represent the eastern third of Monroe County. I think it is in my constituents' interest that this community have one convention center. And that is the underlying, I think, approach that I'm going to be taking here is doing what we can to have one convention center. Thank you.
I want to thank both of you for standing up there to, to take questions and particularly everyone that has spoken on this. It's good to see, uh, President Spoonmore back in these chambers and appreciate your leadership on this. Uh, you've been a constant voice on keeping the discussion going and that is not an easy thing to do in these buildings. And so, uh, I'm grateful for that very much. Um, I have a question and a comment, just one comment if I could. My question to the deputy mayor, thank you for being here. And my, and it's, it's always good to see you. My question to throw out, and you can respond today or you could come back is, as I understand what has been sent to us and, and what has been discussed today. The city's position is that all of this, there's some negotiation to it that, that you all are open to. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. And I think that's a huge thing. I think, um, and I'll make my comment down, but I'll be quiet, I swear. The, I think it's a huge thing that the city is standing here saying, here's an idea. We want to negotiate on that. Um, when I ran for office, I said, I believe that elected officials can work together. They can get good things done for their constituents and bring great things to their communities. And I didn't say that because I thought it sounded good. I said it because I actually believe that. And the funny thing is Talisha Koppik spoke very well about the history of the convention center that we have. I have a lot of history in that building, uh, before it was a car dealership. A lot of people don't always, there's probably what, ten in the county that remember every detail that went into creating it the way it is. We are sitting here as a city and a county with a lot of details that have to be worked out. But in thirty, forty years, somebody sitting in my chair will probably not remember those details. But think about those large conventions that are coming to this town. We have a wonderful thing in this county and this city. And so goes the city, so goes the county, in that people want to be here. People want to be here. They want to live here. Not every other community can consistently say that nearby us. So what I would throw out, and this is my last comment, I swear, is that whatever feelings people have on both sides about negotiable pieces, now's the time to move. I think that we as elected officials, we can't continue to say that we're for something and find a way to get there. And so I, I, I would encourage everyone wholeheartedly to look at it, say, what do I need to see changed? How does that move forward? The second thing I'd say is if there's something that somebody is not for, just be direct and clear about that. And communicate it openly and honestly and say, I don't believe in that. Now, I will say this, long before some of us were on this council, we adopted a tax from this community to pay for this. And when you do that, you have to move quick. And Cheryl Munson is not psychic, but very smart in saying that they will sunset that. If you look at what the general simply did to the women of the state, what they will do to this will be like them running to get a pop on their lunch break. So we got to move, folks. We got to move. We, we don't have the convenience of, of sitting and indulging our, our, our delay or whatever you want to call it. So that's my comment. Thank you very much. And thanks again for being here.
And just real quick, um, and thanks for that comment, Mr. Deckard. Uh, when, and when Mr. Griffin talked about the timeline of the end of September, I don't think it was because the city is just, you know, in a big rush to do this. We're, we're kind of racing against the clock with the, uh, with the general assembly. Because we fully expect this legislation to come back in the state house. I don't think we're going to get lucky enough to dodge that bullet a second year in a row. Um, and as you guys know, the bond, uh, process can take months. When you're working with the financial institutions and the bankers and the attorneys that have to get all of that paperwork put together. Um, it's, it's a lengthy process. And so that's, I think, thank you, was, was the genesis of that, absolutely, of that timeline. We're hearing rumblings, so.
Well, just to note, and I'll say this, and again, former chief staff for one of the legislative caucuses in Indianapolis. The legislators will file and draft their bills literally. They're barely home. Those are down at LSA as we speak. They're, they're doing that. They'll do it through December and then they start. So it is what it is. You say it well.
I'll turn to my left. Are there questions or comments down here? I'm going to start work this way, if that's okay. With Councilor Hawk.
Um, for those who was here when this, uh, food and beverage tax was put in place. One of the last comments and questions that I had, uh, the people in the audience and, and of our legal department was just what will happen if we collect all this money? And all this money is being taken from the people and sitting there and nothing happens. What, are we going to have a sunset on this? Are we going to say you have so many years to get this moving and, and read the minutes of that? Because let's me like this actually happened what my concern was. Going to take the money or not going to move forward? And sometimes I think people need to have that feeling of we have to get this done now. You know, we, we have to, this is our deadline date. So I don't think it's fair that we are taxing people and they're not being given what, what had been indicated. Now, I didn't, as you all know, did not support the food and beverage tax. People in my district did not want me to add, and in addition to which, when we first started heading the convention center and we, and I remember distinctly saying, what if we got to lose? We're going to tax the visitors and we're going to buy the county a building. If this whole thing falls apart, the county still has building. What have we got to lose? That was like, what, you know, how many decades ago? And we do have a beautiful building. We need to take care of it. So, uh, whether or not we move forward is really going to be not up to this body, though we will have a big part to play in it. But I don't want us or anybody else spinning a lot of wheels until our commissioners step up and say whether or not they want to do this, because that's the first step. I've asked for a, a, a flow chart from our legal department. I asked it of Jeff Cockro because he's the one who'd been working with this. And I don't, I haven't had it presented to me, so I'm assuming we don't have it. But I asked for this flow chart. Here's what has to happen legally in each step and who, what body has to agree to it. Because we know that the enabling legislation that even allowed us to have the innkeeper's tax to begin with has it set up exactly that the county is responsible for, for the appointments and we're responsible for voting on the budgets. And it doesn't say we can, oh, just turn that over to someone else. That the legislation says it will be the county. The same thing with the food and beverage tax enabling legislation says who, who has the authority to put the tax in place. And it also says how that tax, uh, food beverage tax commission is going to be put together. And the appointments for that, we can't just make it up and say it will be something else. So that's going to be all kinds of legal questions. And I don't think we should be busy playing the lawyers because people get paid a lot of money to give us the answers. And so, uh, I think that we need to make sure first step, are the commissioners going to be interested? Don't take up our legal department's time doing anything if the commissioners are not going to go forward. Because that costs taxpayer money. If commissioners want to at least, uh, explore going forward. Let's, then let's get those legal questions answered so that we can decide what it is our role will be. But one of the things that, that when we first adopted the food and beverage tax and I questioned what would happen if this had, didn't move forward. Part of the way that we worked around that was, well, what if we had the, the food and beverage tax commission present to this council every year, Cheryl knows what I'm going to say, a report that says this is what they're doing. This is, this is what they've accomplished. Where is this report? It doesn't make me feel real comfortable to feel like we can trust what's going forward when already the agreement has not been agreed to and, and come together. Where is our report? We're supposed to get it at the beginning of the year. We didn't get it. Just FYI. I'm done.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm not going to, I want to thank Mr. Spoonmore in the chamber. Is my microphone not, not really working? It's, it was working in the past. Okay. So I want to thank Mr. Spoonmore in the chamber for taking the initiative to jumpstart this process. It was great to hear from the deputy mayor, from Ms. Kopic, Mr. Campbell, from Mr. McAfee. It probably comes as no surprise that, uh, I support convention center expansion. I'm one of the two remaining counselors who voted for the food and beverage tax and, uh, hi Cheryl. And I do it again, uh, but we do need to move forward and we need to move forward now. I, this proposal is a good start to a real path forward and I hope that the board of commissioners, who as, uh, of course do have to take the lead on this. As, uh, Councilor Hawk pointed out on any asset transfer, give it a serious consideration and a serious response. Um, I did have a couple of questions and also a concern, I guess. The first question, I guess, is more specific to the proposal that was laid out here and that's related to the debt and the innkeeper's tax. So is the city proposing to pay the debt from outside funding sources?
Yes.
Yes. And so then would, would the city then be asking for the innkeeper's tax that's currently servicing that debt? Or could that innkeeper's tax be then used by the county for other purposes within the terms of the statute?
We're willing to negotiate. We need to talk it through.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, and I guess maybe my, my other concern is really more about what specific roles the council would have. And so I, I think if, if, as Councilor Hawk asked for some kind of a flow chart, that would probably resolve that. I, um, you know, of course we do have to appropriate the innkeeper's tax. And, you know, on, on one hand, I could see, you know, that this would require some kind of a, a, a larger agreement. But on the other hand, we already appropriate the innkeeper's tax to a third party organization that then takes care of the convention center. I guess I'm not sure that I even see this as, as a legal change. We would continue to appropriate the innkeeper's tax annually to support the, uh, to support the, uh, the convention center. So, uh, I'm not sure if I'm right there, but that's at least kind of the way that I see it. And then also do we, apparently Mr. Campbell, they have, uh,
I tend to agree with you. Sorry about that. I do tend to agree with you, um, Mr. McCam. I, we already contracted the CVC contracts with Visit Bloomington and with DBI to contract services and with an entity that's set up, um, such as a, uh, management company for managing the facility. We could certainly do similarly and, and I don't think would be inappropriate or out of the norm. I think that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm not seeing that as really a change from what we're already doing. Uh, and then would, would the county have to, uh, or the council, I'm sorry, have to vote on the actual asset transfer?
Yes.
And that's because it's, it has a value of more than a thousand dollars. Is that, because I know there's some question about whether that statute applies for nonprofits.
I think the council would have to vote on the transfer because it's over a thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then my, and then my concern, and I, and I don't want an answer to this now. It's just my, my general concern is related to the scope of the land. So over time, I think the county through the innkeeper's taxes acquired a lot of land. Not all of which will be used probably for the convention center expansion. You know, in particular, it seemed like at one point, the logical direction for the expansion was south. Uh, but now it appears that there's a lot of interest in going north and east. Uh, but, but yet, you know, to better tie in with downtown and I, and I like that myself. But it's also, you know, in, in the meantime, we tied up a lot of land on all sides. And I guess I'm a little bit concerned about transferring that much land. Particularly if some of that land's un, unlikely to be used for convention center expansion. And so, and might have a better use, better and higher use for the community. Uh, so like I said, I don't necessarily want an answer. It's just, that's, that's kind of the broader concern that I have about, about the proposal. I think that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you.
So. Trying to pull it close. Um, so thank you, Mrs. Spoonmore, and thank you, um, Deputy Mayor Griffin for coming out. As to the rest of you all, um, who decided to come out and speak. I, I think I'm telling on myself here. Um, I'm a government nerd and I like watching meetings. Um, and I was able to watch the conversation that you all had very quickly last week in a public comment section of the commissioners meeting. Um, and that's a conversation that has to have long and detailed. We, we just need to have a longer discussion. So I appreciate this conversation that we are having tonight. I too, I have lots of notes up here. Um, and I also have been watching previous discussions via CATS of the convention center expansion talks and, you know, have been disappointed to see how it basically has fallen. And there has been no progress to be made. And so a, a few points that I have, and actually Councilor Deckard had mentioned this too, because when I heard the, the, uh, the date of September, I was like, whoa, what can we do about that? But I understand that, you know, that's something in negotiation talks is, you know, trying to hold feet to the fire so that we can get this project underway. Um, so that is one aspect of it. My other aspect is, um, somebody had mentioned earlier with SB one and how government or different groups have been saying that they're going to pull out of Indiana because of what our state legislators have decided to do, um, unbeknownst to a lot of things. And that's a whole nother subject there. Um, and it was refreshing to hear that, you know, you have the conversation of, you know, we should have this, we should be the beacon of our community. And in so many cases and so many conversations that we continue to have. I'm sure everybody here has heard the fact of Bloomington is this progressive, you know, welcome, opening community. And because in light of everything that has happened in Indianapolis, I do think that it would be great to have our community be the highlight of the state where so, we tout ourselves on so many good things in the county and in the city. And it would be really great to use this as a moment in which we can say, here's another thing that we can add to the list that comes with Bloomington and in Monroe County. And notice that I said Bloomington and Monroe County, because I truly feel that this should be something in which we can all truly come together to work on this. Um, the other part is I know, um, Councilor Hawk and Councilor Munson had both basically made, you know, certain, um, comments here of, you know, there's a chain of command. Uh, and, you know, we are the fiscal body of the county. And I truly believe and I'll just, this is me personally, I'll take it a step further. While we all have roles to play, I do believe that we, um, on this county council can play integral parts. And making sure we, we have an influential part that we can play, whether that's within the city or within county or with our colleagues on county council. And I truly believe that we have collected these funds from our community. We've collected these funds from our taxpayers. Um, there has to be some movement and we can. There has to be some movement and we can't say that, you know. A petty difference over here or a petty difference over there is making, you know, bodies collide and not work together. Bloomington and Monroe County need to work together. And I too have mentioned several times and a lot of things that I've said. And, and get into this position that I am now. Here on the council is, I'd love to see how county government can work together with city government. And that seems to be the issue is let's try to make both of these bodies work together. You know, let's hold feet to the fire. Cause you know, as conversations that I've had with people and also conversations that I've had with people across the political aisle. We, people are looking at us and saying, well, what can you do about it? And we can't sit here and say, well, you know, this is, um, you know, something that we. We can't do because of, you know, this and the other, that is true to a certain degree. But I do think that we can stand as a strong collective front. And we can try to make this happen because our community is looking for, the tourism. Community is looking here for, people have taken the time out of their busy schedules to come here to talk to us about it. Now truly don't want anything to continue to fall on deaf ears and we have to make this work. I have lots of other things to say, but I, for the sake of time, I'm just gonna turn my mic off. But thank y'all so much. But again, the whole thing and the purpose of this conversation is we have to come together. And if there's anybody that's watching that can make these deals happen, let us try to make it happen and come together. Put differences aside and let's make it work because our community is looking for it and we should be definitely looking forward to.
Thanks. Are there any other comments or questions from council members? Not that we're gonna go through everyone again, because you know, there is a limit even with me. I love going last because everybody said everything and made really good points. And I want to just sum up by, um, sharing that I appreciate you all coming here. And that I fully recognize that asking, you know, having you present to the council is just a step. And I'm not trying to overstep the commissioners and their role. I do feel that it's not just a risk that we're running of having. Our, our funds sunsetted. It's, it's our obligation as elected officials to utilize this money in the way that it was intended. We, you know, I was not on council when the, the food and beverage tax was passed. But I, I am on council now and I assume that responsibility. And I, um, I feel pretty strongly that there's a reason we've collected this money and we can't just sit on it. No matter what the risks are of sunset or of. Two convention centers in Bloomington and Monroe County for, for crying out loud, that would be ridiculous. You know, we're at a point in our community where. We have to kind of be more welcoming of the inevitable positive change that's happening. And, um, you know, our population is growing. And with it, our assets, our cultural assets, natural, uh, resources, our economic resources, everything's becoming more diverse. And with that richness and growth comes that responsibility to steward these types of projects. And to really help shape them into something that will make our future as a community more vibrant, more stable. And give it the character that it deserves. So, um, that's my two cents. I'm really excited and appreciative that you've brought this forward and I. Will continue to strongly encourage the commissioners to take the next step and work with you all on this.
Well, thank you so much. I truly enjoyed and appreciated the discussion here tonight and thank you all for your leadership to Monroe County. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Okay. Our next item is from the legal department. And, um, do we? Looking at me. Do we have, oh yeah, we do, okay.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and established this is the first reading of ordinance 2022 dash. Twenty-four terms and conditions for the purchase of land. Ordinance 2022 dash 24, an ordinance to approve in fixed terms and conditions for the purchase of land. Whereas pursuant to the authority granted to the Monroe County Council by the General Assembly of the State of Indiana under IC 36 dash two. Dash two dash 20, the council, a conveyance or purchase by county of land having a value of one thousand dollars or more. Must be authorized by an ordinance, the county fiscal body fixing the terms and conditions of the transaction. And whereas the Monroe County Board of Commissioners intend to purchase land from the Bill C. Brown Revocable Trust. Under certain terms which are described in the attached incorporated contract for purchase of real estate marked as exhibit one. And whereas exhibit one indicates a purchase price of 10 million, $20,000. The agreement requires council pursuant pursuant to IC 36 dash one dash 10.5 dash five. And Indiana Code 36 dash two dash two dash 20.
Second.
Great, are there, um, any questions from council? Do we have, uh, Mr. Cockrell with us? Oh, okay. I just see myself on screen, there you are.
I'll, I'll make a little noise next time. I, I think that's what gets me, gets me popped up. I will keep this brief in that I think we've talked about this a, a number of times. This is the, the piece of property at the corner of Fulton Pike and I-69. The commissioners approved this, uh, agreement pending your approval and pending a lot of other, uh, requirements. Including environmentals, we, including site assessment and, and rezoning of the property. So the commissioners approved this, um, I think it was last week. It seems longer than that, but I, I think it was just last week. And so we are trying to move forward with, with this project. Uh, this is a first reading, we'll have it back at, at a, at a future day. I think that the, the people are most interested in one, the price, the 10 million, 20,000. Uh, which is the amount, uh, we've had one appraisal done of the property, which is that amount. But if you see the language that says not more than the, that or the average of two appraisals. So if it's whichever is lower, so the, the average of two is lower, we, that, that number gets, gets moved down. So. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer them. At this point, I, I, I expect that probably not for your next meeting. I probably will not have the site assessment fully completed. Uh, but we should have the environmental reports done prior to that. And so I think that'll be helpful, um, as we move forward.
Great, thank you for that summary. Are there any questions or comments from council for Mr. Cockrell? No? Yes, Counselor Hawk?
Just wanted to go on record as saying when we, uh, complete this purchase. Uh, we, the county will now have bought three quarry properties. And I guess this is Monroe County. I mean, I know we have a lot of quarry properties in this county, but that's, that's three. So let's hope that when we're through, if this, actually this purchase goes through. That we're actually able to get something moving for that property. Because I don't want to sit on another quarry property like we have the Thompson property. Because that was a lot of money put into property and we didn't use it. I didn't want to buy that property anyway, but. That was just the.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor McCam.
So clearly a, a rezone is one of the contingencies here. What, uh, what's on, what are the next steps, I guess, in the, in the rezone? What has already been done, if anything, and what are the next steps?
Uh, the, the, the next major step is that this will, this has been, uh, submitted. An application has been submitted for this to be heard at the September, uh, City Plan Commission meeting. And so that's kind of the next major hurdle. Clearly between now and then, we'll be working with the city planning to answer their questions. I do anticipate having that site assessment done prior to, uh, that, that, uh, City Plan Commission meeting. Um, and so I think that'll be helpful information to be able to look at, at a piece of paper and see. Where the buildable area is and where likely outcomes would come. Clearly that we've got a huge process as a county and, and maybe going back to. To what Marty said a little bit, the, the goal, the goal is to have this purchase, this property purchased by the end of the year. So that we can get design work going at least by the end of the year. So we can be ready to go, um, through, through all our processes and have something ready to be bid, uh, next year at some point. With a potential completion date two years beyond that. That's the goal and, uh, I'm going to say that at, at these meetings where I know I'm being recorded. It's going to be in the minutes. So we can always be reminded of that when we look back. Meetings, what our goal is and hopefully we'll be able to, to achieve that.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I have another question about the location, uh, Mr. Cockrell, is that in the Tiff District?
Well, it would have been except that, that dis, that area was annexed by the city after that Tiff district was formed. And since there was no debt, um, that kind of fades the Tiff off that property. If, if a, if the, the city, if, if an area gets annexed in a Tiff district that does not have any debt. Then that, that Tiff designation is removed from that pro, property.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, well, um, thank you. We look forward to hearing, um, hearing more information about this, um, at our work session.
Great.
We are now at item 10. The request for approval for a COLA recommendation.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and approved a proposed cost of living adjustment COLA of 5% for Monroe County government. For the budget year 2023. Second.
Um, so I think that, um, this is an item that we all probably want to discuss a little bit. We've. Got a number to start with, with 5%. And I think Kim, you have some information as well as maybe Jeff, um, to share with us that kind of gives us something to start with.
Yeah, I would like to share my screen, please. I was asked to do a fiscal impact report with regards to a 5% increase. And I provided that, um, information here. What I used was the 2020 approved salaries, uh, that in the budget, the 2022 budget and approved salaries. And then I just took those totals and, um, then did a 5%. And at the, a 5% fiscal impact would be 1 million, 467, $500. I also went ahead and did a 6% as well as the 7.5. Because the 7.5 is what we would have used for our CPI. Because we normally use the, um, the December CPI to gauge us on what our, um, COLA is going to be. So, um, that just kind of gives you a reference as to what those numbers are and what they would look like, so. And that's all I have for that part.
Did you say that, um, you used the? The approved budget from?
2022.
2022, but nothing that's been added since, it's not?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, thank you.
You know, you guys, um, approved in December.
Right.
To raise the elected salaries.
Right.
Through the salary ordinance. But that budget amounts were not included.
Got it.
Because we approved the budgets in October. So I only included what was approved.
Okay.
So that doesn't make, you know, those adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McCam, did you have something to add?
Well, yeah, I have a question and then also just wanted to talk about revenue a little bit. Yeah, can we, can we go up to the, the top?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to look mainly at the general fund just because that's gonna.
Okay.
Have the biggest impact. Okay, so it looks like we're talking, it's gotta, and just to clarify, this is only the impact of the COLA alone. This does not count any net step increases or any.
Correct, only the COLA, no step increases, no, uh, adjustments that have been made or additional that have been asked for.
And I know the step increases, you know, that can always go in either direction. You have some people that are moving up the line and other people who are starting at the beginning. And so that could go up or down, that's not necessarily. And, and new positions that we might be creating wouldn't be created, right? Okay, so, so we're talking about basically a million dollar impact in the general fund of the, uh. Of the 5% and then what does that come out to? A million, a million and a half of, uh. At 7.5%. So, okay, that, that makes sense. So just to look at revenue, can I, gonna share, uh. Yeah, now I don't, uh.
Counselor, do you want to use your mic so that everybody can hear what you're saying? Oh, okay.
Well, I, so.
I was gonna ask the same thing, I was like, I can't hear you.
Right, so again, I just wanted to kind of look at, um, what our, our revenue increase is going to, gonna look like based on what we know so far. Uh, and as we know, we have, we know the lit and we know the levy increasing. And so from the lit, based on the estimates that we got from the DLGF. Uh, it looks like we're going to see about 1.7 million, a little over, uh. 1.76 million dollars increase in certified shares. About $700,000 in, um, in public safety. And that does include the reduction in the PSAP rate that, uh, that actually our committee voted on earlier today. Plus, and this is something that hasn't gotten, of course, any discussion yet. 10.8 million dollars more in economic development revenue, uh, from the tax that the city passed. Uh, as well as about $460,000 of, uh, of special purpose or juvenile. And then for, and then for the lowest, well, let's just see if anybody has any kind of comments or wants to talk about the, at the lit at all. But yeah, so basically we're talking about in lit alone and certified shares, which goes into the general fund. We'd be, we'd be talking about approximately 1.7, a little over 1.7 million dollar increase from 2022.
Could I ask you a question on the lit?
Sure.
Would you rather me ask you sometime?
No, 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 please.
Okay, well, uh, what was, I was trying to figure out because we know that this year's lit, uh. Revenue was not worth full 12 months and that was proposed for next year that we've been told will be for that. But will it be for 14 months then? I mean, and then it, and level off in the following time? Or, or was that extra, I'm going by what Dave Boderaff sent to us.
This is the leveling off year, um, the, 2023 is the leveling off year, so I.
I mean, that's not the way it sounded, uh, on the AIC message from Dave Boderaff. He said that was the reason why our revenue was going to be so much more. Did, did everybody read that from Dave Boderaff, his message?
It, it is because the, the 2021 lit was, uh. Remember included 14 months of, uh, of, not of, of earnings, but 14 months of tax returns. And so then the next year, then the 2022s was for only, only 10 months. And then now we're back to the normal cycle, so actually.
To 12 months.
To 12 months.
12 months, so that doesn't indicate then that the following year we would see a reduction. Well, we don't know what it will be, but, um. Yeah, because that, that's, I'm just going by what his response was on what he sent to us.
Yeah, so yeah, we're. Yeah, so yeah, we're seeing the the rebound from the short year, this year. Yeah, so I actually put together a little chart that shows for each year's worth of lit, when the money was earned, when the tax returns were collected, and then when the money is paid out. And so you can you can kind of see that from for the twenty twenty-one lit, which is in orange, we had from July through uh uh all the way through um to September of uh of of tax returns. So there's fourteen months of tax returns. Then the next year, which we're now earning the proceeds of this year in twenty twenty-two, the tax returns were just from September through July, so there were ten months of of tax returns. And so now everything's back to normal. So we should be this year. Right, this year is the short year, twenty twenty-three is the normal, is normal.
Did you also look at the trust account balances, because that trust account balance for the economic development, that the dollars that they're going to be collecting at the end of this year is supposed to be going into the trust only. That that revenue, when you, when I had a conversation with the state uh revenue department, so that all of that that will be collected, the rest of this year, when when do they start collecting it in October? Then all of that revenue will just go into the trust.
Right, it doesn't get paid out at all.
Right.
Yeah, we get nothing until twenty twenty-three. Okay, so there, okay, so that's the lit, then just to look at the levy. And of course, the the levy growth is five percent, but it's going to be up to us how to distribute that among the 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 funds of the frozen levy. It comes out to about one point one six million dollars in in revenue. Uh, but then we're gonna have to split that out. So, you know, for example, we have an election to pay for. So we're probably going to be reallocating um some of that to uh to the election. Uh, but it it at least gives you an idea of what the what the overall increase in in revenue is going to be. So between, so what are we gonna see about one one point, not counting the, you know, the new economic development tax at all, or or public safety at this point. So uh for the general fund, we'll have one point seven million dollars in lit plus yeah, about a million, probably a little bit less, less than that, maybe, let's say, eight hundred thousand dollars in the general fund to use in overall budget growth. But of course, that also counts step increases, that accounts any accounts for any new positions we're gonna be we we consider adding. Yeah, so I think that's all I've got. Does anybody have any questions about these numbers? Okay, thanks. And I know the auditor's office is working hard on getting the other numbers that we need for the the four B, so then then we can actually start thinking about how we might allocate the uh the levy growth.
Thank you for all of that legwork. Seeing it like that is really helpful. So in order for us to support our departments who are trying to put their budgets together right now, or finish up putting their budgets together, it would be very helpful if we could give them a number. And um, I I feel that these estimates give us something to think about and and work with. Um, I believe the motion is for five percent for the coming year. And um, so I'd like to remind us that that's sort of our responsibility to come up with a number tonight that we can agree on. Does anyone have comments or questions on that motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I I don't have a spreadsheet or or data to share, but rather anecdotal. You know, I've been talking to people around the community, and it seems like based on the people I'm talking to, small sample size, you know, in bias from whom I'm talking to, is that people are are entities around town are looking around a four to five percent increase in cost of living. I think we're kind of right on what other, like, if we're gonna benchmark in our community, uh, I think that we're kind of square on the nose there, and, you know, in terms of giving our employees what um, other folks are getting in the community.
Any com- other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, first a question, have we heard anything about any possible increase in the uh health dental life uh overhead?
Ms. Purdy was speaking with them yesterday, so I hope to have something relatively soon, but I'll reach out again tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, we, that that's one one variable, you know, it it just goes up a little, it's not a big deal. But in the past, we have seen some large increases.
What was, there was an estimate given, um, I believe. Wasn't there an estimate that she said to work with?
We are estimating twelve thousand dollars per position right at the moment. And because we know that there was going to be an increase, so we were kind of guessing. But she hasn't finalized that number yet.
And what are we using for this year?
For this year?
Yeah.
Eleven five.
Okay.
The other thing, I guess, I just, my my only comment is that whatever we set today is just for budgeting purposes. We still have to ultimately vote on the budget.
Absolutely.
Context of everything else, so it could still go up or it could go down. I mean, I I guess I don't feel like we, it would be responsible of us to go too much lower. But I kind of agree with with Peter that that pretty, this does seem to track what other other nonprofit organizations are are offering, or at least trying to offer.
Right, right.
Uh, other comments or questions?
Yes, when we were looking at that, and of course, we're looking at revenue that comes in for these kinds of budgets that we know we have every year, but we have to uh look at those budgets that are covered under grants, and we have to be very careful about what we're gonna do with that. Are we going to say the grants have to cover their raises, and sometimes so so anyway, it's when we're looking at how we're gonna make this work, we cannot forget the number of employees that we have covered under grants.
That that's actually a good point. Is is that something, you know, I know that you've had but I mean, I know that that we've had to deal with that in the past. We did, we dealt with that with the um the twenty twenty-seven payroll issue.
Right.
We had to eat it for some departments for which the grant wouldn't cover it. Do do we even, is that something you can reach out to departments to find out if five percent increase? You know, what departments or what grants that would cause a a problem with?
No, I can do that. If that way, we do have some grants that um they renew now, and so knowing at least the number kind of gives them that heads up, but I'll find out if anybody else is, you know, then if that's gonna contact me somehow.
What was the probation? Uh, the the state required, do we know what the state required raise is?
What's that?
It was, it, I don't think was as much as what I was thinking we might be able to do here.
The state did three point three three.
I beg, but.
Three point three three.
Three point three three.
Wow, that's that's low.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'm gonna duck under the table here if we say three point. I mean, I'm hiding.
Right.
Well, you know, some some areas might be considering doing perhaps a cost of living, but then doing like a one-time bonus kind of a thing for each year so that it's not tied exactly to the salary, so that if we see a reduction in our revenue because of annexation or any other horrible thing, then we won't have to change your salary. It could be just be a one, you know, have to pay it out in in a bonus kind of situation. I know they do that sometimes with teachers' contracts and so forth.
City did that a couple of years ago. They gave out their raise as a as a one-time bonus, which meant, though, that that some employees actually saw a reduction in in annual compensation from one year to the next when they went back to the increase.
Right.
Percentage increase was low enough, they actually saw a
Right, I mean, I can understand that. On the other hand, if we see some kind of I mean, it would, it would give us a chance to be able to do more in this coming year than maybe we would do otherwise.
True.
Yeah, I just, I just want to show you that um this is the letter that I received from the Supreme Court that sets that, and it's effective July the first, and it was a rate of three point three three percent.
Okay, then. Yes, Counselor Deckard.
I was just gonna add in here, I I appreciate very much whenever the council, when we're having discussions about what this looks like, how we're thinking about um the the people that serve in all of these different departments, offices, and functions and services. Everybody's been through an incredible last couple, two years, and I'm not sure that the word incredible is the best way to describe it, but I think sometimes for buildings like this, it's good to send a message that we're thinking about it. This is a starting discussion while we figure it all out, um and that we're grateful for for the real lives that that are really serving the people that 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 we all represent.
Well said. Uh, any other comments or questions? Is there any public comment on the issue of COLA? I don't see the online thing, so, no, okay. So it looks like we can do a voice vote, so um all in favor of approving a five percent cost of living adjustment uh for Monroe County government budgeting purposes for twenty twenty-three, say aye.
But so can I just clarify, I'm sorry, just
Yeah.
So I'll make sure we clarify what the recommendation is. The recommendation, or the the motion is for a recommendation of five percent cost of living increase, right, for budgeting, is that, so are all clear?
The motion was actually read as opening for discussion, a five percent, so yes, I had the intent is for sure that we're recommending it.
Thank you.
Regardless, but yes, so I'll try again. Everyone in favor of approving a recommendation of a five percent cost of living living adjustment for Monroe County government employees for the year twenty twenty-three, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. And motion passes unanimously. Great, okay, there we go. So we will work with that, and we will move on to item eleven.
Counsel, I moved to approve the commissioner's request to create new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund four one 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 two zero 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 donations, special programs, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of ten thousand dollars in the supplies category and nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents in the services category for a total appropriation of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
Well, hello. Can you hear me? All right, there we go. Uh, hi, Erica Olive here. I am here in my capacity as the duly elected twenty twenty-two president of the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you for having me. Um, as counsel knows, the Monroe County Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission, or SUDAC, was created uh to address the, well, originally to address the opioid epidemic. It was originally called the Opioid Commission. And pursuant to ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one, we shall serve in an advisory role to assist the government of Monroe County in planning and organizing educational community conversations throughout the year, including at least a biannual substance use disorder awareness summit regarding substance use, collaborate with stakeholders, gather community information relating to substance use issues and concerns, and report our activities to the Board of Commissions on at least Board of Commissioners, excuse me, on at least an annual basis. So I'd just like to make a plug, if anyone uh watching from the public uh is interested in serving on the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission, we are recruiting, and so the application for that is available on the Monroe County Commissioner's website. Uh, members of the public are also invited and encouraged uh just to come and watch or either in person or on Zoom. We do have our meetings in this room on the third Friday of each month at twelve P M. The agendas are posted on the website a few days prior to each meeting. But uh last week, I did present our twenty twenty-one annual report to the Board of Commissioners a little bit late. Um, I'd be happy to give you all a brief overview of those activities from last year, as well as a preview of issues to come, but I know it's kind of a late night, so I'll go ahead and get to the business at hand unless you have questions. So I generated the proposed budget appropriations with some help from Jill Newman and Beth Hamlin. Uh, it was approved by our commission at our regular meeting on May twentieth of twenty twenty-two. And those minutes are on file with the commissioner's office. Uh, I'd like to make one thing pretty clear, uh, we as a commission have no intention to spin down all of this money. So I am appropriating like twenty-nine thousand dollars and some change. It's not because we have plans to to just blow it all at once. I think my thinking on that was that I was hoping not to have to come to counsel um multiple times and and to just have a little bit more freedom and flexibility in using the funds. So that that was sort of the thought process that I had, and and I kind of did my best work to guess which categories might be most effective for that purpose. Should the council be this inclined to appropriate the entire fund in this manner, if it's making you nervous? We do have two specific immediate needs that are directly in line with our directive to plan and organize educational community conversations regarding substance use. To wit, uh, SUDAC in partnership with Centerstone IU Health, the Community Foundation, IU Center for Rural Engagement, IU Responding to the Addictions Crisis Grand Challenges and Regional Opportunities Initiatives is hosting an evening with author, journalist, and storyteller Sam Canones at the Buzzcreek Chumley Theater on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Uh, as you may know, Mr. Canones is the author of The Least of Us: True Tales of America and Hope in the Time of Fentanyl and Meth. Tickets for this event are available at no cost through the Buzzcreek Chumley Theater box office. Uh, our commission has voted to pay for the cost of the venue in the amount of two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And further, we voted to spend one hundred dollars to promote the event, mostly in the form of printing and distributing flyers. These are the urgent appropriation needs that we have as a commission, and those also represent the only expenditures that we have approved so far for twenty twenty-two. I would, you know, I'd love to have the full appropriations, just again, to have that flexibility of not having to come every time we vote, but I'm also um, happy to do uh whatever, you know, gives counsel some assurances that you have some oversight over how that's spent and and things like that. So I'm definitely respectful of those needs. Um, but I do think these are some neat opportunities. I will say that we're a little behind on our biannual uh summits twenty twenty and the events with the op- or not the opioid crisis, COVID-nineteen pandemic, sorry, um, did keep us from having a summit, but we are looking to plan one for twenty twenty-three. So that is where I expect those, most of those funds will end up being directed as towards planning and organizing um that that event in twenty twenty-three. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Uh, are there any questions from or comments from council members on my right? Yes.
So, uh, Ms. Shaw, would you mind sharing the the image uh on the screen? I I think this this bears, I think, a little bit of advertisement. This is the event, I think, that you were speaking about, um, free to the public. Uh, and in just a really renowned author coming and speaking uh on issues that are impacting our community, so I wanted to plug that real quick. Um, you can also, I think, find this on the SUDAC Facebook page, is that correct?
I think that's correct. If if not yet, it will be available on our Facebook page. I'd also like to point out that the SUDAC is also hosting a lunch and learn event with Mr. Canones that is also free. It is virtual on Zoom, and that will be on August thirtieth, starting at eleven thirty A M. So if you'd like information on that, please feel free to reach out to the commissioner's office or myself, and be happy to share you, share the Zoom information with
Ms. Shaw, you might want to stop sharing your screen. Michelle, you might want to stop sharing your screen. We can see the email. All right, thank you. Uh and then I guess my, my comment on whether to leave the appropriation as a whole or to split it up, it does make me a little nervous just having a whole bunch of money out there, even though I know SUDAC does great work. Um and I'm not at all opposed to you coming or a member of SUDAC coming more frequently to update us on what's happening. Uh so uh I'm, I don't know that I'm ready to land on a motion yet, but um that's kind of where my thoughts are at this moment.
Sure, and I understand that. I think um it was, it was a thought that I had, but, but like I say, the two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars is the real critical amount that I'd like to get approved tonight.
Okay. Um yes.
I just wanted to note on, on this motion, I'm actually going to recuse myself on the final vote because I have a family member that is in one of the organizations that you listed, a beloved family member. Uh but that should not be a comment about any of this or my esteem for our wonderful prosecutor.
Thank you, Councilor Deckard. Are there, are there any other comments or questions to my left?
Well, so just to, to, to make sure, since uh Mr. Iverson uh has suggested reducing the appropriations, you're, you said that, that the amount that you actually need right now, is it split between the services and supplies or is it all on supplies or what? I guess split between the two, uh the two categories. What are the needs?
That's a good question. Um I think what we would probably I probably would do um maybe at all in the outreach category.
Okay, so all supplies then, basically.
Yeah, yep.
I mean, I don't think we have to actually specify the individual line. We can just, a- and so that was two thousand and how much?
Three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Perhaps we would round up.
I was gonna say.
I, I was gonna say, I, I need to know which account lines so that I know how to uh appropriate which lines.
Four thousand dollars, is that giving a little bit of flexibility?
Sounds good to me. Well, I, I promise we'll be good stewards of these uh, these funds. We've really been pretty conservative with our, our spending.
I, I would love to entertain a motion. I don't have the skill set at this moment to formulate that motion. So I would really enjoy someone else uh formulating that.
All right, counsel, I move we amend the uh request uh to because solely of line two one one four zero outreach in the amount of four thousand dollars for a total of four thousand.
Second.
Okay, um comments or questions on the amendment? Public comment on the amendment? Okay, so this is another, um since we're all here. Voice vote, everyone in favor of amending the um motion as stated, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So now we should vote on the actual um appropriation. Is there any more discussion to be had? So any public comment? And okay, so we should have a vote on the what?
So we only just, are we only voting on the four thousand dollars as a whole? Or we're just reducing the whole appropriation?
We just, we just voted to reduce the four thousand. Now we have to vote on the underlying motion. And had that one would be a roll call because it's uh it's appropriation.
Making sure I'm following what's.
Okay. So now um we will vote on the appropriation. And are you, does someone else want to say what the, what the it is again? Or are you good? Kim, I'm asking for your, okay. Okay, so um all in favor of the appropriation for the SUDAC committee?
Does that have?
This one has to be a roll call.
It has to be a roll call vote because it's an additional.
Thank you. Councilor McKim?
Yes, can I ask a quick question? Sorry. On my recusal, do I say recusal or pass?
I think either is fine as long as it's clear, abstain.
Okay, Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Abstain.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
The vote is six, zero, one abstain. No, sorry, five, zero, one abstain.
All right, let's, thank you so much. Have a good evening. If you'd like to see a copy of my written report, I'd be happy to share that with Kim.
That would be great if you could forward it to her.
Yep, I will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um and for the record, if it wasn't obvious, Councilor Hawk had to leave. We are now at number twelve, the surveyor's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the surveyor's request for a midpoint hire of the G I S coordinator in Fund one zero 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 six, general fund surveyor, and to simultaneously amend the twenty twenty-two salary ordinances, account line one zero zero two three, G I S coordinator, forty hours, pat D, non-exempt, to a midpoint hire status with an effective date of August second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Uh yes, hi. Um thank you uh counsel um for uh being able to hear me today. Um I think the effective date was supposed to be for August eighth. Uh the starting date was August eighth, so um I'm here to request a midpoint hire. I think the resume kind of speaks for itself. They have seventeen years in uh Esri G I S software, which is our primary uh uh provider um in G I S. And also they have seventeen years in project management. They have a doctorate in industrial heritage, heritage in uh archaeology. Really, um I could kind of go on, but I'd rather open it up to counsel for any additional questions.
Great, that sounds good. Thank you. Um. Yes. Oh yes, let's go ahead and just correct the.
Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and amend my original motion to read with an effective date of August eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Yeah, we would just do a very quick voice vote.
Okay, we're gonna do a voice vote. All in favor of amending as stated, say aye. All opposed, nay. Uh motion passes. Okay, are there any questions for our surveyor um or comments on the midpoint hire? Yes.
Oh, and this is, I apologize, this is only tangentially related. I, I support the midpoint hire, but is is it under the purview of your office and this position to manage the relationship with the, the provider of the Elevate G I S?
Yes, to asserting, to a certain extent, I think it's a collaborative measure that we have um also with the assessor's office. And if you're referring to kind of their site going down uh today, it, it was across the board. Uh multiple counties were dealing with the same issue. They do have it up and running. I was able to get uh our rep on the phone to talk about it, but it was uh kind of above their understanding of exactly what was going on. We did get some communication kind of throughout the day that uh their cloud service provider recycled their s- hosted services, which I don't fully understand what that means, but since it, we kind of manage our data uh here at the county and we kind of then provide it um through a, 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 a backfill of kind of operation or process, um we're fortunate enough not to have lost anything, so that, that's good.
Okay, I've just, I, I've had a number of issues and other people have reported those lately and it just, I have some concerns about the uh you know, ever since the acquisition, I, I have some concerns about the level of service.
Right, and um I uh don't disagree with you. I think we could talk more extensively about it. We are actually meeting with the rep just, just to do introductions uh next week. Um if you have any concerns, please pass them along and we'll bring those up during that discussion. And I think uh what really just needs to happen is um a better kind of uh rapport with kind of Schneider that had uh acquired uh Thirty-Nine Degrees Elevates um over the last uh couple of years. Uh there are some parameters within their own uh contracts of acquiring that um that, you know, um kind of leave our ability because we're already in agreement with them for, I think, um another four years moving forward, so. I, 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 I note your concerns and um like I said, please pass them along and we'll do whatever we can to try to um continue to improve the experience and the services that they provide. But we're pretty much locked into the agreement that uh was approved, I think, and you're asking me a question, kind of put me on the hot seat. I think it was right at the beginning of twenty twenty is when uh I got a call from one of the founders, Chris Walls of Thirty-Nine Degrees North. He told me the day that he signed the agreement to sell it. And within that two years, everything was supposed to kind of stay in kind of a, a status quo, but after that uh uh Schneider has a lot of autonomy in the way that they want to move uh forward with the way that they host. Um Schneider is also Beacon, if you're familiar with Beacon. Um that's why the brand is now looking more like the Beacon.
You answered my question. We, we, we can talk about this offline. Don't worry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or uh comments for the surveyor? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, um now I gotta check and see which kind of vote we're doing.
This is an ordinance, so it needs to be a, a roll call.
Okay, um we will have a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Um we moved, moved to item thirteen from our Youth Services Bureau.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request to create new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund nine one zero three nine six two three, Project Safe Place, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of two thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars in the supplies category and six thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents in the services category for a total appropriation of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Um do we have Mr. Malone still?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, bless you.
Yeah, so we are here, we are just appropriating, these are dollars from the Indiana Youth Services Association. Um state money that goes directly to, to support our Safe Place program. These are grant funds. We're just hoping to have those lines created and have those appropriated today for the Safe Place Fund, which is the first one, I think. Um that's, it used to be called fifteen oh four.
Great. Um do we have any questions or comments on the Safe Place grant appropriations? None? All right, and any public comments? Seeing none? Can we do a voice vote?
Uh no, this is an appropriation.
Yep, okay. So we will have a roll call vote.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Terrific, and we have a item B as well?
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request to create new account lines as presented on the agenda in Fund nine one 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 nine six two three, one five zero three, Y S B grant, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents in the personnel category.
Second.
Um Mr. Malone, do you have any uh comments?
Yeah, just great, yeah, just briefly, this is um the old fifteen oh three grant, which is now they call the Y S B grant. This gives us half of a position as well as some other um hour- hourly funds uh for some, that supplements those monies. And so this is another grant from the same body, just two different grants, one for Safe Place, one for um our youth, uh our Binkley House Emergency Youth Shelter.
Okay, um are there any questions or comments from counsel? Any public comment? All right, and could we have a roll call vote for this one as well?
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
So now we are finally getting to the Parks Department. Welcome, Mrs. Whitmer. I think we have a motion.
We do. She's been very patient. Counsel, I'll be combining items fourteen A and B into one motion. I move to approve the Parks Department request for an additional appropriation in Fund one zero 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 eight zero three, general fund parks of twenty-five the twen- two thousand five hundred dollars in the capital category and to simultaneously approve as a category transfer, transfer of four thousand dollars from the supplies category to the capital category.
Second.
Welcome and thank you for being so patient.
Oh no, excellent. There's no sign-in sheet?
No, I forgot to put one out. It's okay, I got you down.
We know you.
Wow, all, all this whole time, nobody?
No, but I've been, I've been tracking.
This request is not a large ticket item, but it's very important to many people to go to the restroom where they're using uh the Cars Farm Greenway or the Limestone Greenway. These are two ADA porta toilets, not like the ones that you see the rental ones have at IU during football games. These actually have sixty-inch turning radius. They're not really designed to pick up and keep moving all over the place. We would like to keep it at the Sheriff Substation and at the Los Road Trailhead. Um we also have quick, A and A quick pump that would service them. They would pump it and clean it once a week. And if we think it, every other week, we can do that too. Um we're proposing to transfer four thousand dollars from our Greenway supply line to equipment plus an additional appropriation of twenty-five hundred. If you do approve this tonight, we will take this out of our twenty twenty-three budget for sixty six, sixty-five hundred dollars.
Sounds great. Um are there any questions or comments from counsel?
Only that this will be uh much appreciated by users of the trail.
I believe it will.
Absolutely, um in incorporating all users and all abilities is is a priority, so that's very much appreciated. Um is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote?
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Is that everything?
That's everything, because we did them together.
Excellent. I would like to mention that the Cars Farm Greenway from the Los Road Trailhead to Ellisville hopefully will be open mid-October.
Wow.
So we'll, we'll come back. Yeah, it's all depends if the railroad crossing gets completed on time, so we're very excited. Thank you.
I noticed you post- posted some keep off the trail signs there.
Yes, uh where we do have posted, under construction, please keep out, please read the signs and obey them.
Hey Kelly, can I say something? I wanted to compliment something before you got away. I wanted to compliment something before you got away. I spent some time at Will Depper Park. I think it's one that probably gets overlooked a lot by people, and it was such a beautiful afternoon there, and that's, that's a, a really awesome, just everything there with the, both the walking path, the garden and everything else, so.
Well, good news there. It is, in the next year, hopefully, we'll have a connection to the Cars Farm Greenway at that park. It'll be a trailhead and also probably in the next two years or less, connect to the Beeline.
That's great.
Awesome.
Thanks so much. We are at item sixteen. And this is our own council office business. Um, we, um, have some updates on our budget, the budget process in general. We're gonna hear from Ms. Shaw. Sorry.
That's fine.
I, uh, met with the, um, council staff, um, members, and we went over, um, the, the, uh, office budget. And I just wanted to share it briefly with you guys. And you probably can't see it. Like all budgets, we, uh, asked to show, uh, to keep it flat. And so, um, what I'm showing here is in twenty twenty-two, um, it's the adjustment made. Um, I made an in-house transfers to cover the, um, additional amount that you guys changed. I used a part-time hourly for that adjustment, and we also had to adjust the per. So that's what you're seeing there. In blue are the adjustments. Um, what I wanted you to see is I increased the part-time hourly. Um, it's two people. I, um, put nineteen dollars an hour at twenty-eight hours a week. And that's the amount I came up with. Um, I'm waiting to hear back from my part-time person. Um, she's on, out on vacation was what I was told, and she, she should be back next week. So, um, we're, we're playing phone tech right now is what it is, so, um. But I, so the, that amount is a little high compared to what we probably will offer. Um, I wanted you to see that, um, in the contractual, uh, we have a, a carryover from last year, as well as we also added an additional twenty-eight thousand. That's why it's a hundred and seventeen currently for twenty twenty-two. But for next year, it's gonna go down, and that's because I'm, the only thing that I'm coming up with as far as contractual is FSG, and I've estimated them at thirty. We've done consistently twenty-eight for the last couple of years, but because of, you know, rising costs, I went ahead and just went up to thirty. With WIS, um, over, I didn't even count, um, the last, you know, year and a half because of the project that we did, so I went back of, of another year before that. And we roughly do a WIS, uh, thing between two to three thousand quarter. So I kind of guessed that we might use twenty thousand for next year. Um, I'm hoping that because of all that we have done, that it'll be less. We won't see that. Um, I increased the training travel. We are having more council members attend conferences and, and that kind of thing, so, and there's a cost attached to that. The office expense, I increased that because there has been an increase in our color copy charge. Uh, TSD picks up the black and white copy charge. That's covered under our contract, but if we do any color copying, that is charged per department. And because we have a color copier and I do tend to use color a lot with regards to what I do, um, we've almost used up that two hundred and fifty dollars for this year. So I just went ahead and just increased it to five hundred. Uh, the Community Services, I use the five percent uh, growth quotient, which, uh, pushed it up to one fifty-eight, but I do know that, um, counsel, uh, Counselor Munson has requested that we make this even numbers, so, um, I think I would like to kick that on up to, uh, one fifty-nine. One sixty? One sixty?
Okay, I would suggest one sixty.
Okay. And so that, that's where I'm at. Thank you. The budget. Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
So thi- uh, this has the, our BEDC membership in there, but we had an additional subsidy for BEDC. Was that in a different budget?
It must have been because it didn't make it in this, and I, I, Counselor Wiltz asked me about that, and I'm going, I remember it, but I don't remember where it went. I remember. And when did we do it? That was my other.
Well, as part of the budget.
Was it? Okay.
I thought we placed that, and I would be the, probably the last person to ask here. I thought we placed that somewhere like under Commissioner Funds?
Maybe. Maybe that's, maybe that's why I can't read. Right, well.
I mean, I wonder if it would make sense to, to put that in our budget.
It might, let's, um, let's look into that, if you don't mind. And what was that for? Just kind of. It was for, um, supporting BEDC.
To support the BEDC. Who is basically the economic development arm of the county.
Of the county, right, and, um, and they are supported by the city government as well. So we wanted to be a little bit more on par. Um, thank you for presenting this and doing all your work on it. You, there is a mistake? Yes. Um, that I just wanted to point out, and it's not a big deal, um, for numbers, but Eric Spoonmore needs to be replaced with Jennifer Crossley. That's because I used last year's to, so that I could at least present you something, because everything we're doing now is in LOU. Yeah, sure. And so I can't pop that up as quickly, so, uh, yeah. Understandable, but probably out of, yeah, thank you. When did you start? Well. Want to say, is that right?
Two or twenty-one, yeah.
Oh, there's two of them.
A day that will live.
Wow, okay. Um, in general, with the budget process, um, did you want to say something about that, or? Uh, yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that departments are currently working on, um, finishing up inputting their, their numbers into LOU. It seems like, um, it's been a relatively, knock on wood, um, easy process. Good. Um, with regards to inputting that information, but we'll have to, um, I'll get, uh, like a new grid out. We'll have to do a new composed salary grid and that kind of thing with the five percent, and people will have to make adjustments now with that, so. Um, okay. So things are moving along. That's great. Um, you're still sharing your screen, in case you didn't know. And the other, uh, bullet under the council office, uh, agenda item is just an update on elected official compensation information. We have continued to gather lots and lots of data, and, um, I am going to be taking a closer look at it over the next week and, um, asked Ms. Munson to help me out with that, if that's okay. Oh, how delightful.
Thank you.
Um, others are welcome to weigh in on this exciting part of the budgeting process, but, um, hopefully we'll have, uh, some recommendations or at least um, information for decision-making in the very near future.
We'll be talking later.
Yes. I have to get on your calendar. Um, are there any questions or besides giggling? Are there any comments or questions? Um, and we have approval of minutes. Holy cow. I can hardly believe it. I think it's your turn.
It's my turn. The moment you've waited for, counsel, I move to approve the May ten, twenty twenty-two regular session and May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two work session minutes as presented.
Second. Oh, yeah, that's my fault. I did a copy paste. It should be June twenty-eighth work session in July twelfth.
Let me amend my motion.
Is that not what it? That's what's on the agenda. Oh, is that not what he read?
No.
To say it's on the agenda.
I did a Ron Burgundy and read the wrong thing on the teleprompter. Let me move to amend my previous motion to reflect approval of minutes from June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two and July twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. All in favor of making sure that he's got the right dates, say aye. Opposed, nay. All right, good. Um, anybody, any council members, um, like to change, edit, amend, revise? Otherwise scribble upon the minutes. Nope, okay, great. So then we will, um, have another vote. So all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that brings us to council comments. Are there any council members who would like to make comments this evening? Mr. McKim would like to.
I'm just gonna be ve- very brief. Uh, we're talking about, uh, elected official compensation, a topic that I really hope that we don't spend a whole lot more time on, but I just want to say, I'm more, the more I think about this, the more I realize there is no, I cannot think of a, a principled reason for paying the commissioners less than other elected officials, so that's, I'm gonna be, as we move forward in, in our, our salary setting, I think that's at least gonna be my position.
That they should at least be at the top run, so to speak. Okay.
Correct.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Easy. Um. I feel like you have something to share with the class is what I should be saying. Are there any other co- comments? Counselors who want to make counsel comment during? I know, we are good, and that means that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.